I do think that the state bar has promulgated regulations that make it incumbent on attorneys to be competent, and the competency includes technology. And it naturally includes the use of AI. And I think the intention here is an important one for the state bar to be driving in its mission, because it requires it as a portion of competence of the folks that we oversee. It may warrant more discussion, but I also think it has to include internal risk assessment about its use for exactly the reasons that trustee Tony says, that there's, it's, people aren't comfortable with a lot of it, and there's many different forms of it and many different uses. But I want to commend the executive director for trying to get on top of this issue, because I think we are a little bit behind the curve on it. So I would support it or something like it, and maybe there's some wordsmithing that needs to be done.
Trustee Tony's correct, there's no, I would like the board to consider approving the other more technical edits to the existing goals that are included in this item, not the new Goal Five. There is not urgency around really either, but we do develop operational plans that stem from the strategic plan, and those operational plans drive the work that your offices do, right? So the longer that we have this pending, the longer it takes to finalize the operational plans. But happy to bifurcate Goal Five from the rest. I did also want to clarify, Goal Five is intentionally internally focused. This issue of lawyer use of AI is addressed in Goal Three. Goal Three is about regulation of the profession. And we do have in your posted materials an amendment to Goal Three based on previous feedback. You can see it if you can go forward, Luisa, in the deck. Keep going to, keep going, it's in the implementations, Goal Three. There it is, is it there? Yes. So identify the benefits and risks of lawyer use of technology in the practice of law, including generative AI, and explore and implement regulations for appropriate use. So just making sure the board is clear, that's the distinction. Goal Three is our outward focus as a regulator. Goal Five, our inward, our inward focus. But it, but it is there, and as trustee Stevens mentioned, we did publish guidance for lawyer use of AI. The board approved that last year.
So I think certainly to trustee Tony's point on having another trustee partner with him in this, I'm certainly supportive of that. I don't know if there's any member of the board who wishes to be involved in that process? And if not, then I certainly will partner.
Mr. Chair, I'll raise my hand on that. And I apologize, I had to step off for another meeting, and so I think it'd be a good way for me to actually get up to speed on some of the discussion here, because I think I'm probably gonna have to abstain from any vote here.
Okay. All right, so I don't know if we need a resolution for that, but what I'm hearing is trustee Tony and trustee Sewell are going to partner with staff and work on some future, future presentation for the May meeting, work on fine tuning this proposal, and if we need other subject matter experts brought in for contrasting viewpoints, then I think certainly it'd be a good time for that. All right.
I'm sorry, can I just add? And I'm, I think it's imperative that we expedite the use of AI. And so if I can partner with trustee Tony, trustee Sewell, I'd be certainly interested in doing that. I think we, as a state bar, have a leadership role to play, both in developing compliance, both internally and externally, and I just think we have a role to play there, and would love to support any of those efforts with my colleagues.
So we can only, we can only do two trustees, though, due to Bagley Keane issues, so we'll, yeah.
That's totally fine. I'm supportive.
Let's discuss this afterwards, because we may have, take this offline, I think.
All right, sounds good.
So I asked staff to draft an alternate resolution in the hopes that the board will be willing to vote not on Goal Five, but on the other modifications to the strategic plan, Goals One through Four. And just as a reminder, these were submitted for the January board meeting, so for these, it's not your first pass at them.
All right, after everybody's had a chance to review that, please let me know if there's any other questions or comments. And if no further discussion, may I have a, may I have a resolution, sorry, it's been a long day here. May I have a motion?
So moved.
First by trustee Good, is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by trustee Tony, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Chen, not present.
Sisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Huser?
Aye.
Shelby, not present. Stevens?
Aye.
Sewell?
You know, I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna abstain, since I wasn't here for the discussion.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo, not present. Stallings?
Aye.
It's eight ayes, zero nays, motion carries.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to item 704. Actually, and before we get to that, again, thank you to staff for the technology piece. I know this is a new strategic plan initiative that we discussed in January. I think it's a good result of our planning efforts and the diverse viewpoints of our trustees, especially in recognizing that technology touches every aspect of our daily life. So thank you to staff for being responsive in this area. I want to move then to item 704. This is adoption of admissions fee increases related to California accredited law schools. And this is being presented by our chief mission officer, Donna Herschgawitz. So welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I am happy to be back before you here today requesting final resolution of this issue relating to adoption of the fee increase related to the California accredited law schools. In order to adjust the fees for 2024, it's important that we move this item forward. Just to give you a very quick roadmap of what I'll be talking about today, first, I'm gonna start with a quick recap of what has proceeded today, what brought us to this point, and then I'm gonna dive right into the recommendations that I have for you. Please feel free to ask me any questions as I go along, so I can make sure I'm providing you the information that you need in order to make your, to make the decision on the action item today. So starting, excuse me, starting with the quick recap of what proceeded today. So sometime in 2022, recognizing that we had a significant structural defect in the admissions fund, staff began working with the finance committee and the board on, on looking at both cost reduction measures in the Office of Admissions as well as fee increases to try and turn around that structural deficit. In September, this past September, we came to you having gone through two rounds of public comment with regard to a request to increase fees for a number of admissions programs and applications. You approved all of those fees that were proposed in September, taking into consideration the public comment and the changes that had been made as a result. But we held off on the increases related to the California accredited law schools, what we refer to as the CALs. And the reason why, you asked staff to go out for a third public comment, period, because we had identified a different approach that we wanted to look at for addressing what was a really significant proposed increase in what is currently called the periodic compliance report or annual report fee, that really is the fee that covers all of the accreditation services that we provide to the California accredited law schools. We had proposed in September that we could look at, instead of a flat fee that would be charged to every school, we could look at a fee that would be charged based on the size of the school. Smaller schools get a smaller fee, bigger schools get a bigger fee. We also proposed a notion that we could look at charging each fee based on their particular enrollment numbers. The board was intrigued by those options, as well as being informed by the recent development where we learned that the, we had an unanticipated $2 million increase in the revenues over what we had projected for 2023 for the admissions fund due to increased signups for the July, in particular, the July '23 bar exam. So we went out for public comment, considered the public comment, and then I came back to you all in January, and I asked for a breather. I said that we received amongst the public comment, we received a letter from 11 of the CALs deans, asking a number of questions that we thought were important for us to address. So since that time, I have met twice with, with deans of 11 or 12 CALs, depending on the meeting, and went through the items that are identified in your, in your agenda item, and talked about the two, the two fees that, that we'll talk through, the inspection fee and then that annual report fee. So let's talk about the, the, those, those two fees and what we're recommending. With regard to the inspection fee, we'll start here, because that one's pretty easy. You'll recall that in the proposal that we originally brought to you, we were continuing the practice where the law schools pay in advance one-fifth of the, basically a deposit in the amount of one-fifth of the estimated total cost of the inspection. They pay that one-fifth a year for the five years preceding the time that we do the inspection. We had proposed an increase in the amount that they pay as part of that deposit, and that was largely a calculation based on, on the increase in the hourly rate that the board actually did, did already approve at the September meeting. So taking a look at that, we looked at the average number of hours that are spent, that have been spent for the last 10 inspections, and we took that, we multiplied that by the, by the previously approved increase to the hourly fee that would be charged, and we came up with an amount of $37,500 would be the average cost of an inspection. So we're proposing eliminating the five-year deposit structure and just having the CALs pay as that advanced deposit, that $37,500 average number, within 30 days prior to the, us conducting the inspection. And then at the end, as they do today, they would have to do a true-up based on the actual number of hours that were conducted. This appeared to be the fairest approach to addressing this. We, I reached out to our Office of Finance to ensure that this change would not have a negative impact, and the, the feeling was, based on the fact that these are typically staggered to begin with, that changing this approach would not have a negative impact. So that's what we're recommending for that inspection fee, a flat fee for each school of $37,500 to be paid at least 30 days prior to the inspection. I did take a look, when I looked at those past 10 inspections, to see if there were differences in the number of hours by school size, and there was not. There was, there was some differences that, that didn't make sense. So, but overall, any differences were minor by school size, and so that's why we're proposing the same fee for, for all of the schools. The next item was the annual report fee. And I want to break this discussion down into four discrete pieces or four discrete recommendations. So first, you all had asked that we go out for public comment with a reduced overall fee. You may remember, because this number, I think lodged in some people's minds, that what we had requested originally, what we had proposed as part of the board's direction that we do our best to equalize revenues and expenditures, right, to make sure that we weren't continuing the structural deficit, and we had approved an increase going from about $2,100, $2,200 to $22,000. It was a 955% increase. It was because of the magnitude of that increase that the board said, think about going out with something less than that. What we put out for public comment was, was reducing that amount by a third and reducing that amount by two-thirds. So, so what I'm recommending first is reducing the amount of, of that, of the original proposal, which would have yielded about $412,000 for the bar in revenue, reducing that by a third, which would result in $275,000 in revenue. So this will continue the, the many years of the board subsidizing, if you will, some of the accreditation services that, that we provide to the law schools. Again, the reason that you all asked that we look at that reduced fee was because we did have a bump in revenue in 2023 that would be able to cover that cost, and you know that we have a plan to look at all of our fees every three years, and so we, there wouldn't be an extensive period of time where we wouldn't have the opportunity to go back and, and reevaluate. So that's the first part. The second discrete piece here, the recommendation is that we assess the fees to each school based on their enrollment numbers. This is the preferred approach by the schools, and I know when I first presented this possibility to you all in September, just reading the room, I thought I was getting a lot of head nods and a lot of positive response to that. The benefit certainly of this approach is that if schools feel the need to pass this increase along to the students, which many of them or all of them frankly said that they would find necessary to do, the amount that a student would feel would not be different based on the fact that they chose to go to a smaller school or a larger school. And so that's the third recommendation, to not disadvantage students by the school size, to assess the fee based on enrollment numbers. The third and related piece to that is calculation of enrollment numbers. You may recall that the letter from the CALs deans indicated a concern over how enrollment was calculated. What we are proposing to do is, we had, we had lengthy discussions when I met with the deans about first, eliminating duplicate counting. Their, the current report that the, that the, that the schools provide has them indicate the enrollment numbers in each year, so there, how many students in, in first year, how many in second, how many in third, how many in fourth. Although there is, there is direction to avoid duplication, some also, some of the schools in reporting the number of graduates are reporting this, on the same students who were in their third or their fourth year cohort, and so there is a duplication, and obviously there's no intent to capture that. Additionally, one other item that the CALs raised that staff found convincing, convincing had to do with no-shows. Students who, who enroll, and so would be counted in enrollment numbers, but actually never show up and therefore never pay fees, to the extent that we are calculating this based on enrollment, to the extent that the schools may be passing this fee along to their students, and that's how the math is done, counting the no-shows seemed inappropriate in staff's perspective. So as a result of this recommendation, and the fact that the numbers that we currently have from the CALs have these duplications in it and have these no-shows in it, today we can't complete the calculation of exactly what the per-student amount would be, and I hate saying those words, because we are not charging students, we are charging the schools. But we can't do the calculation today of what that precise amount would be, but I had set forth in the agenda item the formula for calculating that amount. With the board's approval of, of this process, staff will finalize with the deans the process for revising the enrollment count for 2024, and will come back to the board in July with what should be a completely ministerial item, just identifying the actual dollar figure for the calculation that would go into the schedule of charges and deadlines. And then finally, the, the fourth discrete item that I wanted to mention, and this also came up in the letter from the deans, was whether there should be a reduced fee for those schools that are jointly accredited. Why should there be a reduced fee? Well, what we have told schools is that if you are accredited by an institutional accreditor like WASC, I've spelled out what that acronym means in your agenda item, I can't remember it off the top of my head, if they are, if they are accredited by an institutional creditor, in addition to being accredited by the Committee of Bar Examiners, then, then they, then there is less that we, less accreditation services that we are providing. There are fewer things that we would be looking for. So as a result, we would, for example, strip about 30% of the questions out of the annual report that wouldn't need to apply to those schools. So looking at that 30%, looking at, at all of the types of accreditation services that we provide, which includes development of rules, which includes reviewing, reviewing the reports for compliance for whatever items are still in there, developing the, the assessment of their, whether they, the schools meet the, the minimum, the minimum, the minimum required pass rate, minimum pass rate, that's what NPR stands for, the minimum pass rate for, for the, for the bar exam. All of that is done for all of the schools, regardless of whether they'll be jointly accredited. So when you put all of that together, what it works out to is, is there would be a reduction of, of staff-provided services of about 11% of the services. And so we're proposing that the fee would be reduced by, by that amount that would equal 11% of the services in order to accommodate the, the fact that we have this jointly accredited status. We have not yet rolled out that status, we're rolling out the, the application process to become jointly accredited in very short order, and because I don't yet know how many schools will ultimately be able to achieve that status, I can't report on what the fiscal impact of that, that reduction would be. But again, we will be looking at these fees every three years and increasing by the CPI every year. So that's, that's the sum of the, of all of the recommendations regarding the inspection fee as well as the annual report fee. I would be remiss if I did not mention a discussion, part of the discussion that I had with the deans. One of the deans, I think speaking for many of them, made a, made a policy argument that, that I know they would want, want you to hear, is a policy argument, arguing against really any, any increase of, of the fee. And I'm gonna read here, if that's okay, so I can just quote him. While California has 18 ABA-approved law schools, soon to be 17, within these ABA-approved schools, options for working adults and those unwilling or unable to incur substantial debt are extremely limited. Several schools are realistically only accessible to the highest earners or highest academic achievers. Several others are practically inaccessible to many parts of the state and many of its people. When all that is accounted for, only five ABA-approved schools in California, admitting a few thousand students a year, are both accessible academically and charge a rate that middle-income students can afford. The argument further went on, supporting the accreditation and registration of law schools should be a public function. Now ultimately, it's not a public function. Ultimately, the state bar, right, is, we are not supported in the same way as other public entities are, by state general fund dollars, by tax dollars. And so if we do not increase this fee, the state bar ultimately will, will, in the long run, right, run out of reserves, be unable to, to pay this, because it is not a function that is, that is covered by, by, by broad state resources. When I asked, how would, how would we address that, the, the feeling was, well, in the absence of the state bar being able to absorb this increase, the recommendation was that we further increase the fee to sit for the bar exam, which was just, increases which, for that were just approved by the board in September, a fairly significant amount, 26% I believe for, for non-attorneys and 53% I believe for attorneys. I think the feeling was that by spreading the amount across all, all applicants for the bar, it would not just be landing on those who are attending accredited law schools. Again, I felt it was important to share that perspective with you, and, and then I'm done with my presentation, I'm happy to take any questions. Otherwise, we do have the resolutions ready for you to vote on.
All right, thank you for that. All right, any comments? Seeing none, I will just make a brief comment. This is certainly a topic that's been on my mind, partly because it relates to, it's going to affect the type of school that I went to through law school, and certainly affect individuals who, as, as the dean said, those who don't necessarily have access, whether it's finances or time, to a traditional law school education. And I'm mindful of that, I'm also mindful that it does not seem that there's an appetite in the legislature to fund this, you know, this aspect of the state bar's operations. I think it's an important one. I think access to justice is something that's squarely within the state bar's purview and something that we've certainly advocated for, but at the end of the day, when you have a structural deficit, you have to increase costs and do so in a judicious manner. And certainly while my, my hope is that there'd be no increase to individuals, I think the balance that is struck by staff and working with the law schools to try and make it as equitable as pro, as possible, I think is a fair, a fair and equitable solution. I am still concerned that this is going to have a disproportionate effect on rural communities, certainly I'm from a rural community, and see how our lack of lawyers affects the, you know, the ability of affects the, you know, the ability of, of our operations to function. And certainly, as our studies have shown, there is a, we're coming to an age cliff where more mature practitioners are going to be retiring in greater numbers than we have lawyer, new lawyers replacing them. So I think this is more of a broader comment on the issue of, of opening access to, to individuals who want to engage in legal education and hopefully individuals who want to stay in rural communities. And I think the state bar is uniquely situated to be able to provide that sort of education to individuals who will have the greatest impact in the communities that they grew up in. So it is, I guess with a, with a heavy heart that I do support staff's recommendation, but hope that this is, that it does not end here, that we continue to have conversations with the legislature about the importance of continuing the important work that I view that these schools do to underserved communities. So those are my comments. I don't know if there's any other comments or if anybody wishes to make a motion.
If I could just add one thing before the motion. I realize I've been talking some in abstractions. Just to, just to give you a sort of a sense of what we're talking about by looking at this number as a, sort of the, the goal of, of 275,000 divided by the enrollment numbers, which obviously will be adjusted somewhat. But when we, when we ran the numbers, it was coming to about $59 per student per year. So just to, right, because I think we're still hearing 22,900. So I did want to, want to just put that in perspective. Not that that is a trifling amount to many, but I did want to just make sure that everybody had that number.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. All right, any other comments, questions? And if not, may I have a, have a motion? Thank you for putting that up on the screen.
I just have a question and it just may be an operational question. I'm kind of curious if, what's the policy if a school does not make the deposit within the 30-day deadline? Is there like a little late fee or something? We don't have to, it doesn't have to be in the, you know, wording, but I'm just wondering how it works in real life.
I don't know the answer. Donna, do you, do you know?
I, so I don't think that there is a late fee that is currently set out. I do believe if we, obviously you don't want a sort of a school's delinquency in paying the amount to delay the conduct of an inspection. Because certainly, right, that would, there could be some bad motives in that. So my, my belief is that we go forward with the inspection and, and continue to build, build a school. But, but I don't think, I'm not sure that that has happened recently because they have, as I understand it, the schools have been making those deposits and we have them, we have the, the funds in, in, in reserve, ready to, to use when we do the inspections.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments? If not, may I have a motion?
So moved.
First by trustee Good, and I'll second the motion. All right, may I have a roll call please?
Barahona?
Aye.
Buenaventura?
Aye.
Chen, not present. Sisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Huza?
Aye.
Shelby?
Abstain.
Stevens?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo, not present. And Stallings?
Aye.
It's nine ayes, zero nays, motion carries.
All right, Ms. Schurzke, thank you for your diligence in this area and for all the work that's gone into this. Much appreciated. Next up, we have item 705. This is proposed amendments to the moral character rules. This is a request to circulate for public comment. And this is being presented by Program Director Tara Clark. Welcome, Ms. Clark. You may begin when ready.
Thank you and thank you for having me here today. So as the chair said, this is a request to circulate the revised rules again for a 60-day public comment period. So for those who remember and for our new members, these rules came before you in mid-last year and they were ultimately adopted by the board and the board directed staff to transmit them to the court for approval in September of last year. The court ultimately denied the request. The court cited, they would want more information regarding the reason for the request, some concerns with deletion of two sentences in Rule 4.52 regarding the extension application. And they directed the state bar to endeavor to standardize the rules with definitions that had already been defined. And so I'm going to talk about briefly what the moral character process is and then the current proposal. So for those of you who may be aware, a positive moral character determination is one of the requirements for admission to practice law in California. And it's defined by the admissions rules, Rule 4.40B. Good moral character includes qualities of honesty, fairness, candor, trustworthiness, observance of fiduciary responsibility, respect for and obedience to law, and respect for the rights of others in the judicial process. Essentially, it's an in-depth background check. So applicants are required to submit an application that requires a variety of information, anything from their education or employment history to any civil cases they've been involved in or criminal convictions they may have. And so our current rules proposal, the key themes are addressing the feedback from the court, codifying and conforming current practice and ensuring consistency within the rules. So specifically for the feedback from the court, we incorporated the defined term of receipt as it's defined by Rule 4.3 M&amp;M throughout the moral character rules. We also amended Rule 4.51 regarding the validity period of a positive moral character determination and Rule 4.52 regarding an extension application. So the revisions try to make it clear that a positive determination is valid for three years or until submission of an extension application. And then if these rules do go through all the way to the adoption phase again, we just want to be, the board to be sure that the admissions staff will work closely with the Office of General Counsel to ensure that the petition thoroughly explains the proposed amendments. And then one other amendment I wanted to call out was to Rule 4.41. So currently, out-of-state attorneys who are disbarred or not in good standing for disciplinary reasons are not permitted to submit a moral character application. With these revised amendments, we actually have removed that prohibition. So this would allow those attorneys to submit an application, allow the state bar to make our own determination on the case while still affording the appropriate level of public protection, given the current case law does require these attorneys to show a higher level of rehabilitation. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Clark. Any questions? All right, seeing none on the screen, any, any questions or comments? Or may I ask for a resolution? Or can I put the resolution up on the screen, please? All right, so this is a request to circulate for a 60-day public comment period. There's no further discussion? Yes, trustee Stevens.
I would so move.
First by trustee Stevens, may I have a second?
Second.
All right, second by trustee Good. May I have the roll call vote, please?
Barahona?
Aye.
Buenaventura?
Aye.
Chen, not present. Sisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Huza?
Aye.
Shelby?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Tony? Trustee Tony stepped away. Trejo, not present. Stallings?
Aye.
It's eight ayes, zero nays, motion carries.
All right, thank you so much. Our last item on the open session agenda is item 706. This is approval of quarter four 2023 financial statement reports. And our chief financial officer, RSeli Montoya Chico, is here. Welcome back.
Thank you. So this presentation, I already gave it to the finance committee, so some of you may have heard it already. So I'll go through some of, or the results for quarter four financial statements for the entire Board of Trustees. I'll first start with the revenue highlights and then I'll follow into the revenue highlights. So if you look at my slides, bar-wide, our revenue was above 431 million, which was almost 100, 100 million above budget. However, most of that is really just related to the grants. The, we, we received significant funds in the grants, grants-related funds. So that's really the main reason why we're almost $100 million over budget. But the breakout of the variance is really by fund, it's presented here. So really quick on the general fund. We are also over above budget on our revenue by $3.6 million. And that was really just mostly more mandatory fees that we received during the year as well as other fees. And the other fees are the CTAP are related to the late fees that we charged us in the CTAP program that was implemented in 2023. So that accounted for most of the variance. Equal Access Fund was slightly over budget, about 700,000. There was really just some unbudgeted grant administrative reimbursements that were not available when, when we budgeted since the contract was not executed at the time, but it got executed in Q4, so we were able to record those revenues. The grants fund, as you can see, it's over budget by almost 21 million. And that's really all related to, so under the grants fund, there's multiple grants, one of them being the Care Court Grant. We received additional funding in Q4, so that really is what cost all the overages. And when I get to the expenses, you'll see that the expenses are also over by a similar amount since it's all passed through. And the Legal Services Trust Fund, that one significantly over by almost $71 million. This is really just our average daily balances of those accounts, the Yalta accounts primarily. And the interest that we originally budgeted, the interest rates that we originally budgeted, the actuals have exceeded both. So that's really driving, larger account balances and larger interest rates earned is what's really driving that huge X's in, in, in actual revenue compared to budget in the Legal Services Trust Fund. Admissions is about, almost close to $3 million over budget. And that's really, Donna mentioned it, we had more February in July bar exam applicants. I mean, we also had additional, almost a little bit over half a million dollar of moral character fee revenue earned in the admissions fund. Client Security Fund is pretty, pretty small, it's right at budget. The other funds are almost a million dollar over budget and that's really just mostly the Justice Gap Fund. There's class action lawsuit settlements that get donated into the fund, so that's really what accounted for most of the variance there. Moving on to the expense, expense summary, our operating expenses bar-wide were, actuals were about 316 million, so almost 25 million over budget for our expenses. Again, a big chunk of that, as you can see, it's the grants fund. But the breakout, again, it's below by fund. In the general fund, we are over budget by 2.3 million. And that's really just mainly due to the elevator and generator capital projects that we were working on during the year. Those were loan-funded, so we didn't budget them, but the actuals get recorded in our books. So that's, that really accounted for most of the variance in the general fund. We did have some savings in temporary help that helped offset that, that overage, if you will. Equal Access, Equal Access Grant is similarly on the expense side, over by about 700,000. This one is, is really mostly due to two smaller grants within the Equal Access Fund. It's a partnership AB145-related grants. When we budget them, there was, there is a minimum filing fee requirement that was not guaranteed, but the Judicial Council, which the EAF comes from the Judicial Council contract, they confirmed that we had met the requirements, so additional dispersments were made for those two funds. Grants Fund, as I mentioned, in the revenue side, it's the Care Court. We got the additional funds in Q4, so we dispersed them in Q4. So you see the overage in revenues and again in expenses. So that accounts for almost $21 million of overage in the Grants Fund. Legal Services Trust Fund is slightly over budget on the expenses by a million. And that's really just mainly to the student fellowship grant that we did not budget. That accounted for most of it. We, we erroneously didn't budget that, but that's really the, the main reason why LSTF is over budget. Admissions is pretty close in terms of their expenses. They were only 400K over, over their expense budget and that was mainly due to the Salesforce, a Salesforce software maintenance expense. And finally, the last two Client Security Fund and the other funds are pretty much at budget, slightly, slightly over expenses, but pretty much on target. And that's, that's all.
All right.
If there's any questions?
All right, thank you. Any questions? I know it's late in the day, don't be scared to dig into the numbers, guys. All right, I don't see any questions. Thank you so much for keeping us apprised of the situation and for your work on all things finance.
Yes, thank you. You're welcome.
There's a resolution.
Oh. Sorry.
It's okay.
Resolution is up on the screen and asks for us to approve those fourth quarter financial statements.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Tony, second by vice chair Sisneros. May I have the roll call vote, please?
Barahona?
Aye.
Buenaventura?
Aye.
Chen, not present. Sisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Huza?
Aye.
Shelby?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo, not present. Stallings?
Aye.
It's 10 ayes, zero nays, motion carries.
All right, thank you for that. All right, that concludes our open session agenda. We do have one other item on closed session. So we will reconvene at nine o'clock tomorrow morning. We'll reconvene initially into open session and then go into closed session. That will all happen at about nine o'clock. So trustees, you will receive a link, if you're appearing remotely, for that closed session for tomorrow. All right, everybody have a good evening and thank you for, for the discussion today.